You know I've traveled here in front, see the shining sea. Seen a lot of places, people that were nice to me. One place that's in my heart, and this is how I feel. Talking about my hometown Fayetteville. She's nestled in the Sand Hills on a river called Cakefield. Special to so many who proudly served our country here. She was named for Lafayette and known for cotton mills. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. My hometown Fayetteville. I'm so proud to be from here. It don't take long when you're away from home to find out how you feel. It's always good to come home to Fayetteville. Babe Ruth hit his first one. Heard around the world. Sherman marched for the Union and burned the arsenal. Old Market House still standing, but stands for freedom's will. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. My hometown Fayetteville. I'm so proud to be from here. It don't take long when you're away from home to find out how you feel. It's always good to come home to Fayetteville. My all-American city Fayetteville. Talking about my hometown.
We'll call the November the fourteenth City Council Meeting to order. Thank you everyone for being here tonight. Welcome to a large crowd. Exciting to have you with us tonight. We ask that you stand for our invocation, which tonight will be led by Elder Jesse McNeil from Smith Chapel Freewill Baptist Church. And then if you remain standing for our pledge of allegiance, which tonight will be led by Troop 740 from Haymount Methodist Church.
Dear God, we come before you tonight, as we come, we come with humble hearts. We come with thanksgiving. Dear God, we are so thankful for this great day that you have given us. This day that you have blessed us to observe your handiwork all day long. As this council begins tonight, we're reminded that you put leaders up and you've asked us to pray for leaders. So tonight, we pray for our precious leaders, those that you have placed in positions of servanthood. Those that you have placed before us, and God, we just thank you for them. We thank you for our mayor, we thank you for every councilman, every councilwoman, and those who are on the streets, God. Those who put on uniforms every day. We're reminded that they are going out for our protection. And we pray, Father, that you will protect them. We pray for their families. And dear God, as we come tonight, we're reminded of the city of Fayetteville and the state of North Carolina. We pray for everybody in this city. We are so thankful for this city. While we realize that it's not a utopia, we know that it's a great place to live. And for that, we give you all the honor. God, we thank you for those who give of their times that we might have a better city. As the mayor and the councilmen convene tonight, we pray that you will illuminate their minds, keep them focused, God, and give them the ideas that will bring their goals to fruition. This is our prayer. In the name of your precious Son, Jesus the Christ, we do pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You got a cooking bag.
Council will again begin tonight's agenda with item 4.0, which is the approval of the agenda. Mr. Hirsch.
Mr. Mayor, I approve a move to approve the agenda, except the addition of the Appointment Committee's report and add it as 8.4.
Okay. Do we have a second? Thank you, Mr. Massey. Any discussion on that motion, council? Let me ask for your vote, please. That's unanimous, ma'am. All right, we'll move now to item five, announcements and recognition, and begin with Ms. Katie
The village scholarship program is based on the concept, "It takes a village to raise a child." The scholarship program is committed to identifying and recognizing high school seniors in Cumberland County schools that are interested in community development and public service. Please contact Mr. Halton at 910-257-7505 for further details and application process. The deadline is November 30th.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Hirsch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Nationally, November 15th is recognized as American Recycles Day. And Fayetteville Beautiful and the city of Fayetteville and Sustainable Sand Hills are together partnering to highlight that and recognize American, America Recycles Day. Come to City Hall and take the pledge, if you will, to pledge to recycle more and look for ways to reduce waste. And you can enter in a contest, and cash prizes and gifts will be given away by going to the city's website and clicking "Can It." And more information will be available on the city's website. So I encourage you to remember tomorrow as America Recycles Day.
Thank you, Mr. Hirsch. We have several special guests in the room tonight, and ask Councilwoman Katie Ann Davy to proceed to the podium, and also Mr. James Pathé, Craig Brown, and Major Chuck Walker, if you'll also join Ms. Davy at the podium while I read the proclamation from the city of Fayetteville. Whereas on November the 17th, 1911, the Omega Sci-Fi Fraternity Incorporated was founded on the campus of Howard University. And whereas the motto of the Omega Sci-Fi Fraternity Incorporated is "Friendship is essential to the soul, and the cardinal principles are manhood, scholarship, perseverance, and uplift." And whereas for 100 years, the Omega Sci-Fi Fraternity Incorporated has been committed to the betterment of the community through its scholarship and social action programs, as well as other initiatives. And whereas there are over 50 chapters of the Omega Sci-Fi Fraternity Incorporated in the great state of North Carolina. And whereas Fayetteville is home to three chapters, with the Delta Gamma chapter at Fayetteville State University being the first chartered fraternity in our city dating back to May 18th, 1951. And whereas for more than 60 years, Omega men have been thoroughly immersed in the Fayetteville communities, being catalysts for positive progress, and will continue their dedicated service through numerous nonprofit charitable religious and community organizations. Now therefore, Anthony G. Shavani, Mayor of the city of Fayetteville, and on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim November 17th, 2011, to be Omega Sci-Fi Day in our all-American city, and extend congratulations to the men of the Omega Sci-Fi Fraternity as they celebrate 100 years of friendship and outstanding service to our city, state,
Wow, that's a lot of words right there. Well, Mr. Mayor and the city council, on behalf of the three chapters here, as you mentioned, yeah, brothers, please stand up. It's indeed a pleasure and an honor to receive this, especially as you mentioned, 100 years of existence. And on behalf of all three chapters, we're steadfast in our commitment to the community, to Fayetteville, and to our fraternity and the nation. We thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thanks for your service.
(applause).
Council will now move to the public forum, and let me give the directions on the forum. We do have 13 speakers who have signed up for the forum tonight, and we ask that everyone be very sensitive to the time. It is designed to invite citizen input and discussion. The forum shall last no longer than 15 minutes. We've extended it to 30 minutes tonight because we do have 13 speakers. Each speaker shall have up to two minutes to address the council on issues related to the city of Fayetteville. And when you see the light located on the podium change from green to yellow, that means there's approximately 30 seconds left of your two minutes. When your name is called, we ask that you come to the podium and state your name and address clearly for the record. And again, please be sensitive to the other speakers tonight, and we appreciate your willingness to work with us on that. So, Madam Clerk, we'll begin the public forum.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, our first speaker tonight is Ms. Dolores Point Dexter.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Dolores Point Dexter. I live at 7932 Gaelic Drive, Fayetteville, North Carolina. I'm here because we bought 1.9 acres of land on Fort Road. Now, we can't build anything because there is no highway there where the cars go in and out. It's just a dirt road. So we can't get a permit to build anything. And we bought the land for our daughters so they could have somewhere for themselves. Well, they are paying someone else's mortgage where they should be paying their own. They said that the private, private land, you know, they would not accept any monies or whatever for their part of the land. So we can't do anything. And I was wondering, did they have a representative to speak to the private owners? To see, you know, because we would pay for the strip of land that they have, you know? It's in between the two roads, you know, in the middle of the road. One side for one and one side for the other. And so I would like to know what can be done about that. I'm paying tax on some land that I can't use.
Okay, Ms. Point Dexter, we'll have staff give you a call, ma'am. Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thanks for your time.
Okay, our next speaker is Mr. Roosevelt Odom.
Hello, everyone. My name is Roosevelt Odom Jr. I live in Fayetteville, and I was born and raised in Fayetteville, and I was born and raised deaf. I want to congratulate you for re-winning your elections. So, I wanted to let you know I'm working to help set up here in Fayetteville for a regional center for the deaf and hard of hearing here in Fayetteville. The Department for the Deaf and Blind and other people who have speech problems, they're under the North Carolina Department of Services for the Deaf and Hard of Hearing. That's the state division that supports us. And they have seven different regional centers here in North Carolina. There's one in Wilmington, and there's one in Raleigh. Those are the nearest two to here. Fayetteville was sort of overlooked when they were setting them up. And I've been researching, and I'll continue to research, how many deaf people we have here in the Fayetteville area, because the population has continued to grow. And I'd like to help expand and possibly set up or support a regional center that the state could put here, because, you know, help develop the skills and tools that the deaf people of our Fayetteville community need to help keep them empowered and able to self-support. And so next month, I want to let you know, I'm working this month to maybe bring some more deaf and hard-of-hearing people to city council and to voice their concerns and get in touch with the folks in Raleigh through the state to support Fayetteville as a regional center. So I wanted to let you know that's what I'm working on. And I wanted to let you know, before I go, I'd like to also pray for the victims of the Penn State abuse, because I know myself, as, you know, I was sexually abused as a child in the deaf schools. So I wanted, at the Governor Moorehead School. And I want to pray for those people and those children who are abused, you know? And boys trust those people, and it's a real hard situation for them. And so I feel strongly that we need to pray for them. So, thank you.
Thank you for coming, sir.
And I'll see you next month.
Our next speaker is Mr. Peter Stewart.
Greetings. My name is Peter Stewart, and I live at 125 Dundee Road in Fayetteville. My grandfather, father, and I have been business owners in Fayetteville since 1928. I am speaking to you in response to a warning notice I received several weeks ago that was issued when my business car was parked beside Bragg Boulevard, with my hopes of drawing attention to my restaurant located at 723 West Rowan Street, just up the street from where I was parked. This warning notice, which I found highly offensive and even insulting, was based on the recently passed Unified Development Ordinance. I wrote and delivered a personal letter to each and every one of you on the council, including the mayor, about my concerns. I wrote an opinion letter published in the Fayetteville Observer on October 23rd. During the worst recession of our lifetime, after closing one business, I have decided to invest $300,000 starting a new business, building a new building, and hiring eight unemployed people. The ordinance cited in my warning notice is the most anti-small business regulation I've ever encountered, and is coming from Fayetteville, which has 10% unemployment now. I find it appalling to be notified that eight square feet is a large sign, to be told to park 50 feet away from any right-of-way, or to enjoy a $500 daily fine, and to face criminal charges for daring to promote my small business with a vehicle sign. I just hope the majority on the council agree that Fayetteville is and can continue to be an all-American city without this anti-business law. Most of us have been and will continue to be proud of Fayetteville for what it is today. You are not the staff's representatives. You're not the representative of out-of-town, highly-paid consultant that wrote the UDO. You are the elected representatives for the people of Fayetteville and for the small business owners in Fayetteville. Please, please, I urge you tonight to remove Article 30-5Z from the UDO. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stewart.
Our next speaker is Mr. Matthew Driggers. Our next speaker is Mitchell Schreid. Sixth speaker, Michael Hodges.
Good evening. I'm Michael Hodges. I reside at 411 Grayland Place here in Fayetteville. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, mayor, I'm here to speak to you tonight about an issue that concerns my wife's business. Last fall, my wife and I purchased two lots on Sandhurst Drive for the purpose of building her a new children's clinic to provide more space and more parking for her business. In the spring of this year, we hired an architect, a builder, and a site engineer to help us design that space for her. Site preparation moved along very well until our builder went to the city planning office to obtain the final building permit. At that time, we were told that we were not in compliance with the hospital area overlay district. We were told to appear before the Board of Adjustments, requesting a variance to be able to obtain our building permit and continue to build my wife's practice. We appeared before the Board of Adjustments on September 19th. We were granted a unanimous decision variance by the Board of Adjustments on September 19th. On October 6th, our builder received a build permit from the city planning office. We've now been told that we are faced with an appeal on behalf of the city of Fayetteville. It's my understanding that the city council is appealing the decision of your Board of Adjustments, and in essence reversing their decision to grant us a variance. I'm here tonight to ask you to please drop the appeal in Superior Court, allow my wife to build her children's clinic with ample parking and safety, and according to the intent of the hospital area overlay district. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thanks for coming, Mr. Hodges.
Our next speaker is Ms. Anna Hodges.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. I'm Dr. Anna Hodges. I'm trying to expand my business here in Fayetteville. My husband and I are both business owners here. I own a practice already, Legacy Pediatrics. I'm currently on Oliver Street. We bought two lots on Sandhurst Drive with the purpose of expanding my practice, not to expand it necessarily for economic reasons, although that's obviously the intent of every small business, but because the practice where I currently am right now has not, does not have adequate parking. We bought two lots, not one, so that I could have the parking available that I needed for my patients. I went through the process, as is necessary by your city planning. I went to the variance, the Board of Adjustments. I received the variance. I received a building permit, and now it's being appealed. The hospital area overlay's intent, according to the, is to provide adequate room for parking. It is to create a pedestrian-friendly development. The site, as I have it now, gives me 37 parking spaces, with my building in the back, parking in the front, as is every building on Sandhurst Drive. I'm not asking for anything different than everything that is already there. The planning office would like me to put my building in the front of the lot. I have no issue with that in and of itself, except that by doing that, I lose 10 parking spots. So I go from 37 parking spots to 27 parking spots. I have three providers in my clinic. 27 parking spots is not adequate. What that means is the overflow is going to go on to Sandhurst Drive. I don't know if any of you go on Sandhurst Drive, but it is a two-lane road that is parked on both sides already with cars every day. All I'm asking for is the parking I need to protect my patients and keep my patients in my lot. It will improve the traffic on Sandhurst, it will provide for adequate parking, and it will, in fact, my layout will support the intent of the hospital overlay better than what the city would like. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Thanks for coming, Ms. Hodges.
Our next speaker is Mr. Scott Brown.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, fellow council members. Again, my name is Scott Brown, 4D Site Solutions, reside at 409 Chicago Drive, Fayetteville, North Carolina. We are the engineers and surveyors for the project that Dr. Michael Hodges and Dr. Anna Hodges spoke about earlier. We went through the normal process of submitting a site plan that would comply with the current P1, or what was the current P1 zoning ordinance, was changed now by the UDO. And there was never any intention to deceive on our part as far as the hospital area overlay. That was the ordinance, that was, that overlay district was passed December of last year. And it was, with all the research that we had done, the normal processes and steps that we go through as far as preparing a site plan, we did not find that overlay existed. And we went through the normal procedure for submitting plans, went through inspections, went through city staff. We got verbal approval from inspections that the plan was good to go. Therefore, city-owned staff was unaware of the hospital overlay area. Once we determined, once the builder went to go get the building permit, it was determined that it was a hospital overlay area. We looked at it, we met with staff several times to try to figure out a resolution to get around the problem. And what the staff recommended, we go through the Board of Adjustments. We went through the Board of Adjustments, as staff had recommended. We were told we were going to have a recommendation from staff. We found out a couple of days before the Board of Adjustments meeting, the staff had changed their mind, excuse me, and was going to deny, recommend denial of the variance. We went through, as Dr. Hodges stated, we got a unanimous approval from the Board of Adjustments, and we were told the building permit would not be issued because the city was considering appealing the Board of Adjustments decision. That board, that building permit was issued. We assumed that the process was over. We started, and come to find out later that now the Board of Adjustment decision is being appealed. And I'm here tonight asking you to consider dropping the appeal to the Superior Court for that Board of Adjustments hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Our next speaker is Jackie Hare.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Congratulations, also on your reelection. I am the builder alluded to earlier. My name is Jackie Hare, owner of HCC Investments. I reside at 220 Dobbin Avenue. And indeed, on October 6th, we received a building permit to construct. We began the process of construction. And then upon request by one of my subcontractors to the city inspections department for an inspection, we had a call that said that they had been instructed by higher-ups not to inspect that site. I've been in business for some 30 years here in Corning County. Certainly, I feel like that we have somewhat of a good feel for the scope of adhering to rules, regulations, and laws. And we certainly were not trying to circumvent any law at all. However, again, I am, as Mr. Stewart alluded to, one of those small business persons that has struggled in the last several years, primarily due to the real estate market. And here, again, I think the city is complicit with why, the reason we're here tonight. There was no way, apparently, for the December 31st adoption of an overlay district that we did not know existed. There was no way to assimilate that to the people who needed to know. If we, if you were not an owner of a piece of property that got letters from the city and/or other means, you just happened to be at the meetings, then you did not know that this overlay district existed. Such was the case with us. Dr. Hodges took possessions of property in September of 2010, not ever receiving a letter, knowing anything about the overlay. So I am asking and pleading tonight for two things, actually, to cease and desist on this appeal attempt and let us go back to work. And secondly, I think previous recommendation before this was ever adopted in 2010 was the fact that the center island, I'm calling it, between Sandhurst, Cakefield, and Walter Reed on one side, be exempt from this. So I am asking the council to reconsider, look at this, and exempt 556 Sandhurst Drive from the state. and exempt, uh, 556 Sandhurst Drive from this overlay district.
Thank you, sir. Thanks for coming, Chair.
Our next speaker is Mr. Neil Yarborough.
Good morning, or good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Neil Yarborough. It's been a long day for me. I started in Wake County at eight o'clock today and have just gotten out of another meeting. Uh, my address is 115 East Russell Street. I have represented, uh, Dr. Hodges and Dr. Hodges, uh, in this effort for some time now, uh, through their Board of Adjustment, uh, hearings. You, as you, all of you know, I'm a true believer in good zoning. You appoint a Board of Adjustment to be an independent voice, a quasi-judicial board, to hear instances where your ordinance don't make sense and create an inequity. The five people that you appointed to that Board of Adjustment heard the evidence, asked the hard questions, and decided to grant a variance. Not all that we asked for, but what they thought was necessary to protect your, the viability of your ordinance while still giving the type of relief that this particular situation demanded. Now, I was in court today trying to get your, trying to get the city's lawsuit against the city's Board of Adjustment, and my clients dismissed. I had with me Doug Gill, who is now your appointed Board of Adjustment attorney, who's representing your Board of Adjustment against you in this effort. The judge is going to render his decision at nine-thirty tomorrow morning. If he dismisses your appeal, please don't appeal it. If he doesn't dismiss it, take affirmative action yourselves to dismiss this appeal. Two of your local doctors are trying to develop a children's clinic in your hospital zone to help the needs of young children, the medical needs of the young children of this community. Please do so. Also, we have a valid building permit. Why are we not getting the inspections? Why are we not getting our stuff inspected? Why is there foot dragging? Why is this going on? We'd like to know that. We're asking you for two things. Number one, get an inspector out there tomorrow to inspect our stuff. And number two, please, if it's dismissed tomorrow, let it stay. If it's not dismissed, vote, take your own action in open session to say, "This is not going to do it. We are not going to proceed against our own Board of Adjustment." The mere fact that the Board of Adjustment doesn't follow the recommendation of your staff is no reason to do that. They're supposed to be independent. There was absolutely no opposition to this thing. It was a five-o vote. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Thanks for coming.
Our next speaker is Mr. Clayel Bickers.
Hello, City Council, Mayor.
Sir.
My name is Clayel Bicker. I reside at 306 Oak Ridge Avenue. And, um, I'm speaking on the same UDO, uh, sign ordinance that Mr. Stewart was speaking of earlier. Speaking as an employee of a small business, I am seeking your assistance to consider an amendment to a particular portion of the current unified development ordinance dealing with sign standards. I believe this amendment is needed in order to address current trends in business advertising, specifically vehicle wraps, and to provide specific direction for coded compliance personnel asked to enforce the law. Specifically, I manage a small business, American Signs by Tomorrow, that provides graphic design for new and existing businesses. Our clients range from large corporations to small startups to governmental and military agencies. One product we provide is the graphic design for vehicles, commonly referred to as vehicle wraps. These designs are used in a variety of ways to promote businesses, make public service announcements, or simply allow vehicle owners to make a public statement with their vehicle. Recently, I've been contacted by some of the business owners in town concerning the violations of the UDO Article 30.5, Section L in the signage section, subsection four, Article Z, basically vehicles with large signs parked near the right-of-way. Section Z prohibits vehicles and trailers with signs exceeding eight square feet on any one side from parking within fifty feet of a public right-of-way. Since most vehicle wraps can cover an entire vehicle, the total area of the advertisement on one side can easily exceed eight square feet. I believe this ordinance is biased against most businesses, their vehicles, that use wraps and/or large graphics and lettering. During times of fiscal crisis and recession, I don't believe the city council members want to discourage businesses from advertising as much as they can. But this ordinance penalizes those business owners from using the latest trends in business advertising. I do appreciate the need for, to regulate signs and preserve the integrity of our city environment. On the paper I passed out is an amendment that I proposed to that UDO ordinance. Specifically, instead of having a vehicle prohibited from parking other than, or fifty feet outside of the right-of-way, or you have to park fifty feet outside of the right-of-way, one of the proposals I recommend is to have a vehicle that is, excuse me, that is promoting that business, I'm sorry, that is promoting that business to park within a hundred feet of the business. And you'll see on that, that paper that there are some more things that I wrote down. But I appreciate your time.
Thank you for your time. Thanks for coming, Ms. Bickers.
So our next speaker is Mr. Iman Iranami Mohammed.
I think he might have left, ma'am.
Okay. Our final speaker this evening is, uh, Mr. Charlton Johnson.
Mayor, City Council, I want to congratulate you on being in the office again. My name is Charlton Johnson. I stay at 334 Point Place. I come down here because I read into the newspaper that they're planning on, they're planning on closing, they're planning on either closing down the post office or even moving it. That comes to me very serious. That means that I can't mail out my letter. That mean the letter is going to be getting short if they were to close the, the post office down there on Green Street. Now, when I come to you, I come to you with a very serious issue. I know your time is important, just as mine is the same thing. Now, I come to you, can I tell you to, in, to check and see if they is going to close the post office or if they is whatever they going to do down at the post office. Cause, uh, cause, cause if there is, then it's going to, it's really going to mess up our main post office down there. We depend on that, relate that. And I come to you as that, but if I don't hear nothing, that means that I'm going to have to go even further. I'm going to go, I'm going to go, um, I'm going to have to make, uh, um, I am so kind of, uh, a little upset, cause, cause, cause the way that thing is going, it just, just don't make no sense. But I do want to say to y'all, I depend on y'all, and I'd like to see, I'd like to see some kind of fourth effort. I have come here one time before about trash getting thrown on the road, but that's another issue. The post office is the most important thing. But I just want to thank you for your time and stuff.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
And you will see me again. I just want to thank you. Bye. You have a blessed night.
So that was the last of our speakers.
Okay, we'll close the public forum. And just for those of you who spoke tonight regarding the wrap signage, there is a meeting scheduled. We've asked the Chamber of Commerce to get local businesses. And Doug, do you remember, or Dale, do you remember the date and time of that meeting? And where is that at, Doug? Okay. And we will publicize that, an opportunity for business people to be there along with our staff to talk about what the ordinance says and doesn't say, and, and make sure that we all understand it and, uh, and consider any modifications at that time. So please attend that meeting. We would appreciate that. Okay, we'll move now to tonight's consent agenda. Mr. Bates?
Yes, sir. I'd like to pull item 7.18.
Okay. Any other changes? Then can we take that as a approval with the exception of 7.18, Mr. Bates?
Yes, sir.
Is there a second to that? Thank you, Mr. Arp. Any discussion? Let me ask for your vote, please. That's unanimous, ma'am. Okay, let's turn to 7.18. Mr. Simon, who's going to, uh, give a presentation or prepare for Mr. Bates' questions here?
Mr. Perry.
Hey, sir.
Hi, my name's Neil Perry. I'm your interim city traffic engineer, here to any, answer any questions you may have.
Yes, sir. Okay, now, on the very first page, or page seven dash eighteen dash one-one, it says right here, repeal the following speed limit. Description, thirty-five mile per hour school zone at Northwood Temple. And then one right below it is, um, Mary McCarthy Elementary School Zone. Now, I'm not, we're repealing the speed limit for the schools?
Uh, no, sir. Uh, all these, all these are, all these repeals are, is to correct, um, errors in NC DOT's database. It's not changing any speed limits in any of these areas. This is just correcting database errors. It's just paperwork.
Okay, now, just paperwork, just paperwork says, and it specifically says repeal the following speed limit. And that's just what I was confused about when I sent it out, that I'm going to pull it because I'm not in favor of increasing speed limit in a school zone. But this one here, do you have anything that says, because it's not in this packet, that these school limits will not be increased? And I know the, the difference between a regular speed limit and a school's speed limit by state statutes and stuff. But at the same time, I mean, this one right here says repeal the following speed limit. And there's nothing, go, I, I'll let you go, but there's nothing in there that says they're not going to change that.
Yeah, I understand your confusion, and it is somewhat confusing. And I, I spoke to NC DOT on Friday, and they, they wrote a, a memo dated November 10th. I'm not sure if you have that, but I can certainly share it with you. But it basically says, um, the attached, uh, certificates of concurrence for these ordinance do not, will not, uh, change any existing speed limits along these routes.
Okay, so, so we can get a copy of that? I mean, I just, you know, paperwork follows, and if they say, you know, we're not going to do anything unless we have it on paper, you know, a month or two down the line, we'll start getting phone calls, you know, the speed limit has been increased.
Can we get a copy of that to all the council members, and we'll attach that to the minutes of the meeting? And as the backup to the, uh, ordinance, assuming we adopt it. Is that okay? It'll be, it'll be the paperwork.
Yeah, I just, just want to make sure.
We do need to have a, a motion to approve the ordinance, uh, seven eighteen. By somebody. Tonight. Mr. Massey?
If in fact the speed limits do not change, and that is documented, I make a motion that we approve the ordinance.
There's a second?
There's a second.
Thank you, Mr. Arp. Any discussion on that? Let me ask for your vote, please. That motion carries. Those in favor, Mr. Chris, Ms. Applewhite, Mr. Hurst, Mr. Shavani, Ms. Davy, Mr. Arp, Mr. Massey, Mr. Moan, and in opposition, Mr. Bates. Okay, we'll move now to item 8.1, which is an update from the Cumberland County, Fayetteville-Cumberland County Chamber of Commerce Economic Development Plan.
Good evening. I had to look at Rebecca to make sure that I was good to go. Okay, I'm good to go. You recall that, uh, just, uh, maybe a month or so ago, perhaps a little longer than that, we were, uh, together in one of your work sessions, trying to make sure that we understood your expectations related to the special projects that are included in this year's performance contract with the chamber. Uh, I will tell you that while we're not a hundred percent certain that, uh, we're on the same targets that you are on, we are here tonight, uh, tonight to present to you some progress made against those goals. Uh, and then also certainly to share with you our traditional benchmarks, which have also been adjusted upward, given the last three years' rolling averages. So with that, let me introduce, uh, Bo Gregory. Uh, Bo is going to walk through, uh, what we've been able to do so far with regard to Hope Six, the All-American City, uh, and, uh, the Murchison Road project.
I'm sorry, do we have a handout on this?
Uh, no, sir.
We, we emailed over the presentation, sir.
Okay, we need to get hard copies of, uh, that information. We can get it tomorrow, but make sure that we get this. Go ahead.
Good evening, all. Um, as Mr. Peters mentioned, we are working on some of these, uh, special projects. And while we are trying to figure out what each another exactly needs and where some gaps may be that we can address from a, from a different perspective than we have in the past, uh, I'll start in, on those list, uh, as we've been conversing, the Hope Six Multi-Use Park and the Murchison Road redevelopment, uh, as special projects. All-American City co-branding, uh, with our collaterals and also those of the city. And, um, how exactly we are going about a lot of our, uh, hunting, as it were, for, uh, new opportunities to bring here and locate in Fayetteville and Cumberland County. Um, as we do a lot of work that doesn't necessarily get captured by the metrics that we've traditionally used, we've just decided to have a better conversation, I believe, to try and fully understand your requests and what we are able to deliver and, and the way that that's done on the, on the private side. On the Hope Six Multi-Use Park and Murchison Road redevelopment, as y'all had asked us to just approach that and see from a private sector perspective, what would be the best way to get that off the ground, uh, quickly. We have talked to many of our colleagues and interviewed with a number of, of different firms and have one that we would recommend having a conversation with, uh, at a further point. It's a group called FMK Architecture, and, uh, they have experience with Hope Six projects, as well as experience in partnering the private sector who would invest in the non-traditional, uh, type of businesses i- in a multi-use park like that. That, that they have a track record of understanding the question, understanding how that needs to be planned, to a point that there is a lot of, uh, trust in that when they believe that's the right way to do it, that the market will answer, uh, in an effective way, in a more, in a, in a faster way perhaps than if it were just planned and hoped to be sitting there. In essence, we use, you use our contacts and we use their contacts. And as that spreads out to, to really get this product off the ground in a fast way, going directly, being a market-driven product as opposed to just deciding what we want it to be. At the end of the day, making sure that what needs to be delivered to that neighborhood that's adjoining to that is something that will be supported by the market, invested in by the market, and to hopefully quickly fill that up. But move on to the-
Can we stop?
Yes.
I'm curious, you kind of put both, those are two separate projects.
Right.
Murchison Road and the Bu- Business Park are two separate. So which one of those are we?
This is, well, this one is the Hope Six. Uh, and, and as there is a plan in place for the Murchison Road development, we have stepped out to look for this, uh, a, a, the right way to address this need as well.
So that this FMK Architecture Group in looking at the Business Park would kind of do the feasibility work that we've already done on the Murchison Road?
Very, very similar to that, but, but almost in a, uh, a market-driven way, I would say. And really to having a pulse on, I mean, there, there actually is, believe it or not, not a lot of people believe it. There is a lot of money out there that is wishing to be invested in projects that are going to be successful.
Have they looked at the Murchison Road, uh, impact projects?
Uh, yes, sir. They have, they have reviewed that. And this is sort of a, a test case, honestly, for, for our community to see. While I know other communities that can name and, and those in the market that trust, uh, what they've been able to do, we can see what it is on this and then move forward as a separate project, you know, simultaneously, or we can do it as a future project. I know those are, the, the Murchison Road corridor portion, uh, admittedly in conversation with them is, is going to be a bit of a moving target, seeing as there's traffic changes on the bottom that aren't due for a while. There's new traffic patterns that are going to be coming into the top. How much traffic's going to come off I-295, that's not really calculable right now. And how that's going to drive what product, either on the top end of Murchison near I-295 or on the bottom, which is going to be a larger driver, and what type of product it's going to be. Much like this, uh, the, the Hope Six project, the office retail multifamily, making sure that we have the right mix of those. Initially, when I discussed the Murchison Road project with them, I did also say, think of it as 100-yard football field. And if we are going to get into a relationship, business relationship with them, I would want to see 30 yards of actionable, well, I call it weaponizable data, a plan that we can use and go out to market. And as we go through those phases, stopping at about 30 yards, reevaluate what we have, what's been successful, and what may be the new demands and needs. Because this could be, you know, believably an eight-year project. And within the first three years, what's needed and what's available and what's possible to be delivered to the market, those needs may change. And as we partner with FSU and the landowners and the business owners, how the new traffic patterns and how the new investment in that community, that section of community has changed, it's not something that we can decide today, what 15 years from now is going to look like, or 10 years from now is going to look like. And if we approach it from this market-driven pattern, I think we're going to be a lot more successful initially, which is very important for a project to continue out to its full extent like that.
I do have a quick question, Bo. Over the last, and you may not be able to answer this, but since we've been speaking of this Business Park with Hope 6, I've asked many times what the vision is for this. You know, I was told, well, it's going to create jobs. What? We're still like weighing this conceptual thing, and I'm wondering, are we building something? We got something, we don't really know what we're doing with, and use the term, "non-traditional businesses." I'm hoping that at some point, somebody can tell us what in the world is the plan.
Right. Well, and that's exactly what this is about, it being addressed in this way. I mean, even as a term of art, when you say the Hope 6 Business Park, it's relative small to the word "Business Park." You and I and someone else may have a different definition of what a Business Park is. A multi-use park is probably more of what the developer and the planning would prefer to call it and conceptualize and move forward in this, because otherwise, you build a Business Park and we've got to just recruit those in. You build the infrastructure out.
Right, so whatever we call it, Business Park, multi-use park, I hope that at some point soon, we can just get our hands on it. Because right now, because I've asked the question several times, right now, I think we're just trying to make this up, to put something there that we really don't need. We have so much property and Business Parks around here, and now we're going to do something else, and nobody seems to have a clue, at least I don't have a clue, what we're doing.
Well, and I think that's why, when y'all asked us how we might go about it from the market side, that's what I get from them. I get from them that they, and their past track record has shown that they understand that question to an answerable point where, in a short period of time, I can have a product in my hand to show at least where that direction's going and come back and report to you, and it not just be something that we're back in four months asking the same questions.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? Wanted to go through quickly some of the co-branding as part of that, our wonderful award that this city has won, and how we do, some of, a little bit of what we do, but how we can mix those two together to make sure we get the Fayetteville name out to the world, which there's a lot of people that know about Fayetteville and how wonderful, great. And it looks better than that normally, the website off. We've incorporated the dates, the dates of our three awards of this on our website and our new Chambermaster website that rolls out, that those are constantly on there. The co-branding, we recently won an award for Business Expansion Solutions for Defense Business Recruitment. This is the fifth year in a row that this community has won that award and our economic development partnership has. We've included that on these collaterals. These are handouts that go out, hard copy, I have some of them here tonight that I can leave with you. And I think it gives us a great opportunity. This is a print that a local artist, retired command sergeant major Philip Pierce, who owns Digital Blacksmith Studios, produced. And when I was discussing it with him, I said, Phil, we need a piece to really speak to the community and for the community when we go to the AUSA Show, which is the Association of United States Army Convention, both annual show and a trade convention. It's the largest defense contractors convention in North America. And Phil sat down, he incorporated in our chamber logo, and then on the other side, and balanced out the three shields, and subdued within the eagle as landed all of the commands that are here at Fort Bragg now, that Forces Command and USARC have now call us home. And we had a phenomenal response to that. There is only, this is the first year in North Carolina in any communities had a booth at AUSA. And we were the only community, other than some additional economic developers and companies there. And Phil was out front, we were out front, Phil was signing these prints. In the pictures that are here, Senator Kay Hagan came by. We were also joined for two days, mind you, and I would give credit to the staff, my former colleagues at the Department of Commerce, Secretary Keith Crisco, the Secretary of Commerce for the state, attended both days, worked the floor. And we were also with our regional staff, which is located here in Fayetteville, of Marty Butler and Ken Allen. And we had a phenomenal success. He probably signed upwards of 300 to 50 to 400 of these posters that are now, ones hanging, I believe the mayor has one in his office. Senator Hagan will have one in her office, we're getting ones for Senator Burr. That was no party line choice, those are just the ones that came by the booth. There was some discussion with the holiday the day before that had messed up some of the schedules. So that really helps us to brand, as you've asked us to, to co-brand along with our materials and yours, to get out what the All-American City means, as well as boots on the ground of out there telling the story. To that extent, I traveled to California later last month for what I briefly described earlier as speed dating for companies. These are the Live Exchange Event, which was held in San Diego. And I can assure you, no, I don't know what San Diego looks like. I was in the hotel for two days with 16 different companies. Of those, they weren't just any companies to be invited. There's a list of requirements here, to be invited as a delegate. These individuals must be responsible for a company's relocation expansion plans, currently conducting or about to start a preliminary search, plan to make a final decision where to expand or relocate between October 2011 and 2013. The project will have at least one of the following, over the three years, 40 jobs full-time, a million dollars in payroll, including health and retirement benefits, $2 million in capital investment. So these individuals are coming, and we're coming from the other side to discuss our community and what we have to offer. Of the ones, we chose the ones we'd like to speak with, and we were matched up. A sample of the ones that I spoke to was a medical plastics manufacturer, an aviation's part manufacturer, weapons manufacturer, cleaning chemicals manufacturer, nationwide accounting and program management services company. One of the largest drivers out of each of these 16 companies that were interested in coming to talk into Fayetteville and Cumberland County was our geographic location on the East Coast, midway between Maine, Miami, and our access quickly to five deep-water ports. There's not a lot of other communities that have all of those rolled into one with a major interstate running north and south, and now with the I-295 going east to west. We'll actually have farther access within to the county. And along with all of the other, that was the debate, so to speak, was the physical location, but that gave me the opportunity then to talk about the education through private university systems, the public university systems, the community college. Basically, the pitch on why this is not only a geographic really great place for you to do business, but a quality-of-life and cost aversion location. And I believe out of those 16, within the next 10 months, we should have visits from about nine of those companies. They were that serious, particularly based off of logistic needs that they have, that that's a cost driver right now for a lot of companies. I will now turn this over, if there are no questions, to Mr. Peters. Thank you.
Thank you, Bo. One quick note, we do know, and I think there's a typographical error on one of the slides, we do know that it is the All-America City, not the All-American City. The collateral is correct, the slide was incorrect, I apologize for that. Let me run you through what we've been able to do, if I can figure out which direction to go. What you have here and what you will have in your email tomorrow is a list of the five priorities that are being pursued by the chamber. And I won't spend time talking about that, but I would like to go directly into what we've been able to do against our annual benchmarks related to investment, job creation, existing industry visits, contact with prospects, as well as national marketing opportunities. If you look at the first slide, you can see that the investment total has increased from $50 million to $116 million. That is a rolling average of the amount of investment that we've been able to accumulate here and track over the course of the last three years. So that's a rolling target. That $116 million, we're at 45% year-to-date. After the first quarter, we came in at $52,663.
Can I just need to ask?
Yes, sir.
I just need to go back to that one. Can you tell me exactly what, $52 million in the first quarter of this year, what exactly that means?
I can show you that in a slide that's coming up, Mayor. If you'll bear with me just for a moment. Job creation, annual target is 847. Historically, it has been 500. Again, that's a rolling average total over the course of the last three years. Percent of the annual target year-to-date after the first quarter is 15%. 131 jobs created in the first quarter from projects that we have had the opportunity to be involved with at some level. Synchronous visits, these are when we go out and meet with existing companies to help them work through growth plans, to help them remove roadblocks, find financing, find additional square footage, what have you. The first quarter target is 18.75. We came in at 18 or 24% of the annual target of 75. Contacts and prospects, quarterly total, thanks in part to our participation in Live Exchange, is 60% of the annual total is at 40%. We try to reach 150 prospects, introduce them to doing business here in the community. These are companies that do not currently have a presence here in Fayetteville and Cumberland County. And then, of course, the national marketing opportunities, annual target is 25. We were able to do eight placements, including really a full publication spread in Business Solutions Magazine. The total for the year-to-date is 32% or eight against a target annually of 25. So if you look here, Mayor, directly to your question, what are the projects? There were two projects done in the first quarter for $5.4 million. One professional project, this happened to occur at the Black &amp; Decker Building.
Who were the retail?
I don't have that in front of me, Mayor. I can share that, I can send you a note with that tomorrow when we send the slides over. Professional, one professional project that's in the Black &amp; Decker Building, that is $1.4 million. One medical healthcare project at $200,000, and two manufacturing projects at $14 million. And one of those is Goodyear, another expansion with those folks, and a manufacturing supplier to an existing manufacturer. When we go out and compile the information using Synchronous, we try to come back and share with you what it is that we do, what we hear from those folks, to help us to prepare a little bit of a better understanding of how our community is performing in the eyes of those companies that are being asked about their experience here. And you see here what those averages are. Water ranking of 5.8 out of 7, 7 being the highest rating a company can get. And if you continue to look down that list, you'll see what some of those rankings are. Fire consistently ranks among the highest. Interstate access, they're at the bottom of that slide at 5.69, also ranks pretty high. Technical College, Fayetteville Tech, always a great partner in economic development. If you look at air cargo service, that ranked a 6.23. And if you look at trucking, access to ports, access to highways, logistical support for companies that are here, that also ranks pretty high. And I would be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Yes, sir, go back to that last slide.
If I can find out how to, is that the one, sir?
What are you telling me on air passenger service? What does 5.00 mean?
Well, 5.00 means that we are ranking better than average. If you consider a scale of 1 to 7, 3.5 would be an average rating. Coming in at 5 means that folks are satisfied, but there's still improvement that we can make.
A rating, Mr. Peters, has to be relative. We're rating our shelves in comparison to whom?
Their view of how well we perform on those particular things.
In comparison to whom?
It's based on their experience here. If they have a bad experience at our airport, they may rank that lower than another company who did not have a bad experience. So we're asking them to rate on a scale of 1 to 7 their satisfaction with these things. And then we average those out based on, and if you go back to the number of companies that we've been able to talk to, we talk to 75 a year to try to make sure that we're covering a broad perspective.
The last question.
Yes, sir.
You know, Mr. Gregory gave us a fine presentation of the innovations that you're using, the networking that you're using, all of the things that you're doing, and you're working hard to attract business and industry. But the bottom line is, when you come here every quarter, I'm looking to see what businesses you've brought to us. And I don't clearly see that, okay? You talked about 131 jobs. Did we create, though, we being the hierarchy and the chamber create, or influenced those 131 jobs? Or were these because of independent business owners that simply hired people? Did we influence those 131 jobs?
Yes, sir. I think that it depends on who you talk to. We have been before you in the past and have suggested that we have worked on projects and have had that challenged by developers who have said that perhaps we did not have a role in those things. What I can tell you is that when we talk to a company, it's entered into our log. When those companies then expand, whether it's through our assistance, whether it is through our ability to provide them with the resources they need to be able to make those things happen, we track those things through to fruition. So did Billy Taylor at Goodyear create a significant investment at Goodyear because we told him to? No, he's responding to market demands. But what I can tell you is that without this community's long-term support and the support that we have provided that plant, it's anybody's guess as to how that plant could have stayed here as long as it could have. They have completely retooled, they've done a lot of things that this organization, this community, has assisted them in doing.
Keep the heat on, man, keep working.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Chris, may I also add, there are those that are not in the numbers, that are not ones that we have attracted here. But since they have been here, I would not hazard, I would feel very confident in saying, Ty Blanchard at Raytheon, if you called and said, what has Bo Gregory and the Chamber of Commerce done for us since we've been here to help us expand our business? He'd be able to give you a number of different things. And believe it or not, Mike Rushton, who is the alum program manager for the Wounded Warrior Project, which while it's a nonprofit, has a $93 million annual budget to assist wounded soldiers that takes no federal nor state money, and it's all driven by the private sector. We have been able to help Mike, introduce him into our business community, helped him as he tries to work with the on-post Wounded Warrior Project. And there's some of those, those don't go in the numbers of what we include as projects that we have assisted to bring here. But I can assure you, both of those two men, and I can name others, would say with great confidence, if it were not for the chamber and having a partnership there, that they would not be able to be as successful in this already great community just for the fact that it takes that long, otherwise, to make those connections.
How you doing on membership, increased any since the last quarter?
Well, compared to our peers across the United States, we're doing quite well. We exceeded our membership numbers for last fiscal year, which was the first time in about the last four years we've been able to do that. about the last four years we've been able to do that. And we just got our audit report back last week. And last year was the first year in five years that we made a profit. And please don't look at that term negatively, that means that we've put some of our resources into reserve to better serve the business community, rather than overspending our revenue, which had been the case.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Let me speak to you how this process works, and I want y'all to stay for this next strategic, the city's strategic plan update. We have multiple goals that we report on quarterly with very specific action items, and we monitor staff and our performance against those. Three of these goals have your name on those. So I don't want to come back at the next quarterly meeting and say we're not exactly in sync with this. We need to be in sync because we're being held accountable and our staff is being held accountable. Merkison Road Corridor Development is a specific goal identified by this city council, and we are commissioning you to do that. If you don't understand what that means, and I would suggest y'all have some more meetings with staff and y'all get in sync with what it means, because we want it to happen, and we've been told that you're being charged with making it happen. The very same thing with the, let's see, the Business Park for the, where's that one at? Hope Six, what page is that on, Doug?
Hope Six.
Hope Six Business Park is exactly the very same thing, Hope Six Business Park Development, a goal, a priority that's been identified by the council. We're being told y'all are the ones charged with doing that, so we want to make sure we're in sync with that gets done. So when we're sitting here at the end of the year, we will have had success with these. And our time horizon is not ten and fifteen years. I don't want there to be any confusion about that either. Our time horizon is not ten or fifteen years.
Mr. Mayor, are you asking us to complete within one year the redevelopment of Merkison Road?
No, I'm not saying that. I'm saying these are our goals. If we're already three months into this year and we're not in sync between what the city has identified the goals and what the chamber, our economic development group, what specifically the steps that we will see happen the first year, that, we need to get in sync on that. Because none of us need to sit here and, you know, think, part of us think we're doing great and part of us think we're not, because we're not clear on what the expectations are. So before we come back together for our next quarterly report, because when we get to our staff's report in just a second, she's going to say, Business Park, the Chamber of Commerce is handling that. When she's going to say Merkison Road Corridor Development, she's going to say the Chamber of Commerce is handling that. So we need to be in sync with that. So I do think that whatever that's going to, whatever's going to happen over the next year, we need to be in a clear understanding so the expectations are set. And then we're accountable against those expectations. And if that dialogue hasn't gone on yet, I would suggest that before we meet again, that dialogue needs to go, so we're not confused about it. Okay? Thank you. Other questions on the chamber's report tonight? Thank you, sirs. Ms. Rebecca, thanks for coming tonight, ma'am.
And it's before ten o'clock, so very excited about that. Okay, good evening, Mayor, members of council. Item eight point one B on your agenda this evening is the presentation of the first quarter report for fiscal year two thousand twelve. Council, in your agenda packet, you received the first quarter report, which details some of the achievements Mayor was speaking about, that you and city staff have accomplished thus far during the first quarter. You've also received a publication tonight at your dais, which highlights this information as well. And please feel free to look through that information as we go along. Conscious of the other items of business tonight, my remarks about each item will be brief, but I do want to take an opportunity to share with you and the community the remarkable progress that has been made toward reaching the objectives outlined in the city's strategic plan. First, I'd like to take us briefly through the strategic planning model. The city of Fayetteville has a strategic planning model that takes council and staff through an annual process of understanding where we are as an organization, and where we want to go, and how we want to get there. A strategic plan is a living, changing document. The vision statement for our community reflects the city of Fayetteville that we hope to achieve in fifteen years, and the standard of living and vibrancy we achieve through our actions today. My report tonight will focus on answering questions like, what has the city of Fayetteville accomplished during the first quarter of this fiscal year that makes Fayetteville a great place to live? One with desirable neighborhoods, with fun things to do and places to go? What has our organization accomplished that brings us closer to having a vibrant downtown? And how are we planning for beauty by design? Our mission as a local government identifies for the citizens of Fayetteville our organizational role in pursuing that vision. It focuses our effort on providing quality municipal services that make Fayetteville a better place for all. And providing these services to our community are approximately fifteen hundred dedicated employees who represent the backbone of this organization. Council, through the strategic planning process, you have recommitted yourselves and our organization to the core values of how we operate. The city council and city employees serve the community with respect. During the strategic planning sessions, you've determined the path our organization must follow in order to reach the community's vision. The path defines six goals that we hope to achieve in five years. Creating a greater tax base diversity is the number one goal, and seeks to increase our tax base by retaining and growing jobs and by attracting development. Efficient city government focuses our organization on results and accountability. Growing the city with livable neighborhoods focuses on improving the quality of life for our citizens. The goal of becoming a more attractive city will provide the community with less trash and visible blight. Working toward a greater community unity will build partnerships between citizens and their government that we can all be proud of. And lastly, revitalizing downtown as a community focal point will provide a center of economic and recreation activity that citizens will enjoy. From these goals, council, you developed a work plan for the next fiscal year through prioritizing the policy and management agendas with twenty-seven targets for action, and it is these items that your report tonight will focus on. These are the activities that council and staff will spend a majority of their time during the fiscal year. The background and the full action plans for each of these items are contained within your report. But at this point, I'd like to share with you and the audience at home just some of the work efforts in the first quarter. Now, under the policy agenda, we have the park bond referendum. Using the Parks and Recreation Master Plan, staff is working to develop a potential bond referendum that will sustain previous park investments and enhance the quality of life for current citizens and future generations. Staff worked to finalize the structural plan and updated the council and commissioners at their joint meeting. The police substations project will analyze the feasibility of adding police stations, police substations in strategic locations throughout the city. During the quarter, we executed the agreement with the consultant, and we were monitoring the study. The FAST improvements for Evening Service supports the goal of a more efficient and effective city government. FAST will work to implement an operations plan to extend Evening Service on several routes and to extend Route Nine to the Cape Fear Valley North Pavilion. Evening Service has been implemented on Routes Five, Eight, and Fifteen, and staff is working to prepare for the Route Nine extension. Nonprofit organizations provide key services to the citizens of Fayetteville. This item seeks to follow efforts to review the city funding policy and reporting mechanisms for these organizations. City council received an update from the city manager's office and reduced nonprofit funding in the adopted fiscal year two thousand twelve budget. Council Policy one thirty-five point one will govern that administration. The sewer hookup acceleration target for action followed a request from council, I think back in February, to study the financial impact for the acceleration of the sewer extension schedule for Phase Five annexation area. City and PWC staff reviewed the current model to identify the impact and provided that report to council. Given the limited resources available, the consensus was not to accelerate the sewer installation at that time. The building demolition program will support the goal of a more attractive city. This target for action seeks to prioritize the use of building demolition funds to achieve the greatest impact. During the first quarter, a hundred and sixty-nine buildings were identified as either dangerous or blighted, and were assigned a priority for the initiation of enforcement action. To ensure a greater tax base diversity, the city partners with the Fayetteville-Cumberland County Chamber of Commerce for economic development activities. Council, we've just received the update, the quarterly update, from the chamber, and I thank Mr. Peters and Bo for being here this evening. And as a part of the contract reevaluation, the chamber will continue to report on performance quarterly. The sign ordinance target for action focuses on developing a modernized sign ordinance that is consistent with the UDO. The goal is to develop a comprehensive approach for the sign code to be presented and considered by council. During the first quarter, staff engaged the planning commission by providing them a visual reference survey for types of signs which will use as, they will use as a basis for engaging the community. The street lighting ordinance project followed the implementation of the ordinance, which enhances public safety and the quality of development in the city. The purpose of the ordinance is to establish uniformity for the location of lights, as well as how the lights are paid for. A revision to this ordinance was approved in April. City and Progress Energy staff have collaborated on the implementation, and in December, Progress Energy will include street lighting building on the electrical bills for some residential customers. A communication plan was developed between the city and Progress Energy that included messages for customers and a webpage that explained this process. Council, you've requested a comprehensive compensation plan for all departments. You recognize that hiring and retaining quality staff is a critical aspect of providing excellent citizens to service to citizens. Much work toward that end has been accomplished. After soliciting and evaluating proposals, a consultant was chosen, and work began through initial meetings, council updates, interviews, and presentations. The job analysis questionnaires have also been processed. Solid Waste Contracting for Services seeks to research and explore opportunities for outsourcing city services. Staff researched options to outsource garbage collection and developed an RFP, which was due in October. Staff also developed the current cost of services, which are in review. Fayetteville Beautiful is a committee of concerned citizens dedicated to encourage others to take greater responsibility for improving their environment. To support the city goal of a more attractive city, council sought to endorse these efforts. Fayetteville Beautiful has contributed to litter reduction, waste reduction, and beautification throughout the city, and they receive weekly requests to volunteer, for volunteer support to help with the cleanup and the beautification projects. Council will now move on to your management agenda, and these are items that are generally projects that are already underway or that represent a completion of a work plan. Bragg Boulevard Corridor Development. This focuses on the redevelopment of this area, which is, of course, essential to Fayetteville's transportation infrastructure, especially as we construct the I-295. Staff will engage the community regarding desirable development along this corridor through the use of consultant services. In the first quarter, staff evaluated the base data and infrastructure plans to outline a proposed scope of work and needed resources. To meet the objectives for the city goal of a strong local economy, council and staff will work continuously to support the objective of securing a nonstop flight to our nation's capital. We've extended the contract with the consultant and engaged major airlines in meetings and The Reclaiming Neighborhoods Project has been a priority of council and staff to support the goal of growing city with livable neighborhoods. It is a component of the Police Department's Community Wellness Program that takes a holistic approach to the problems in specific neighborhoods. The Police Department continues to collaborate with key departments, and they execute concentrated operations, in this case in the Bonne Dune area. They also coordinated a community day, which took place October eighth. The Hope Six Business Park Development Project will address economic development activities in the Hope Six area. Of the forty parcels identified, the city acquired sixteen at the end of the quarter. The acquisitions also included the former home of Dr. E.E. Smith. Staff has also completed the agreement with the Chamber of Commerce to assist with the redevelopment of the Business Park. A city-wide comprehensive communication strategy outlines specific actions for engaging internal and external stakeholders. It is a powerful tool and a cornerstone to effective leadership. This target for action seeks to follow the development of a city's communication strategy that will support improvements in, improvements in policy and protocol. This really is a three-pronged approach, one that's based on crisis communication, marketing and branding, and public information dissemination. During the first quarter, the city welcomed a new Public Information Officer, Jennifer Low, and supported the effort to acclimate her to city policy and protocol. Staff collaborated with our emergency management coordinator for improvements in the emergency operations plan, and we began researching options for a consultant to develop a written plan that will focus on crisis communication and bolster our internal communication efforts. Our Corporate Communications Division also focused on the All-America City Marketing Plan. We developed that plan and briefed city managers and council. This marketing plan moves quickly and can be followed in the manager's weekly report. The campaign is all about the opportunity that Fayetteville does offer its citizens through economic strength and about citizens being engaged in the community. We've incorporated social media tools and launched the city's Facebook and Twitter, and we're also collaborating with the Fayetteville Convention and Visitors Bureau for an advertising and marketing campaign for downtown. The Limited English Proficiency Project is also a priority for council, as we recognize that Fayetteville is a diverse community with citizens from all types of backgrounds, nationalities, and cultures. This target for action seeks to develop an overarching citywide policy that identifies steps to mitigate language barriers in providing services to our citizens. At the end of the first quarter, staff has completed research and development of the policy. We've also briefed council and executed the policy, incorporating it into our administrative policy library. Staff continues to monitor the needs and implement these procedures established by the policy. The Old Days In-Site Development follows the North Carolina Veterans Park Master Plan. The city seeks to develop a land use plan for residential housing in the area. By the end of the first quarter, the RFP was issued and advertised, but there were no responses received. Staff plans to reissue the RFP. This year, staff will concentrate on the land assembly and design for the multimodal center. Staff has worked to facilitate the design process with meetings that began in October. The Prince Charles Hotel is a historic landmark located in the downtown area. Unfortunately, conditions were such that this building was declared dangerous and ordered vacant last October. To date, there's only been partial compliance. Staff will continue enforcement action to persuade the property owner to achieve full code compliance. This year, council, there are six management in progress items that were identified as key projects for our success in reaching the city's goal. Therefore, this report tonight includes an update on those items as well. Currently, our community has two primary public safety answering points, one's managed by the county and the other the city. This project seeks to consolidate those operations. The report before you details the significant accomplishments made thus far and identifies the action plan moving forward. The Prop Program has been a priority for council and staff for many, for several years. The work efforts relate to city council and staff's desire to identify and better manage any negative impacts of residential rental property citywide. The extensive background is including in your, included in your report. This quarter, staff is focused on revising this program to be consistent with the newly enacted state law through the work in the community. The North Carolina Veterans Park has changed the face of Fayetteville's downtown and brought together the community in celebration. One only has to look at the success of this weekend's Veterans Day events to see that. By the beginning of the first quarter, construction of the first phase of the North Carolina Veterans Park was substantially complete. But to really appreciate this accomplishment, I would draw your attention to the photograph taken in June of this year. We were very much still under construction. But about two weeks later, a different picture, a testament to those that had planned years for the success and worked tirelessly to see it complete. The features in the park are designed to honor veterans of all military branches, telling the story of a veteran's journey before, during, and after service. On July fourth, two thousand and eleven, the state celebrated with our community the opening of a beautiful living park. The ceremony was a huge success and a tribute to those that were honored. Dedicated efforts of council, staff, community volunteers were rewarded by the faces of the hundreds of veterans that were present. Daily attendance at the park continues steady with a hundred-plus per day, many more than that, and evening attendance is very popular. that, and evening attendance is very popular. I'd like to remind the community of the Veterans Park website, and if you enjoy these pictures, there are many more available to view on the website and on the city's Facebook page. Just a few more brief updates to share. The youth council seeks to teach young people how government works and engage them in civic leadership. The Human Relations Commission did update council, and plans are being made to meet with liaisons and community stakeholders. The city gained ownership of Festival Park Plaza and is improving the occupancy rate. The city manager's office will continue to monitor and assess the climate for future use of this building. The city will work with the Chamber of Commerce to support the redevelopment of Murkison Road Corridor, and will continue its work efforts in the Catalyst Site Number Two in partnership with F S U. Council, I know that that report was was a fairly long one, and I thank you for the opportunity to share with you, the citizens here in the chamber this evening, and those watching from home the progress that we've made thus far. The body of work represented in the strategic plan report is directly related to this organization's commitment to continuous planning, evaluation, and reporting. In fact, when you receive my report, the next report that I will prepare, you will be preparing for your strategic planning retreat. That date is scheduled for January 31st to February 4th with a follow-up session, excuse me, occurring in March. As council members, you are policymakers for this very complex and diverse organization. Without a crystal ball, it is not an easy job, especially with so many competing needs and limited resources. But your commitment to being an advocate for our organization ensures that we provide the community with high-quality municipal services. And finally, I would like the audience to know that this report and the strategic plan is available at the website listed on the screen, and with that, council, I'd ask you to accept the report, and I'd be happy to take any questions that you have or direct them to your project liaisons who are also here this evening.
What's the date?
I'm sorry, on the retreat, then council needs to hold typically that Friday, the third, and Saturday, the fourth.
Yes, sir.
Friday, the third.
It's January 31st through the fourth that Mr. Sumac will be here, but typically, it's Friday night and Saturday, yes.
Friday, February 3rd and Saturday.
The fourth, yes, sir.
All right, Mr. Moon, and then Ms. Applewhite.
Thank you, ma'am, for the presentation. That's a great way to summarize all the pages in the agenda packet, you know, very good. This question might be for Mr. Iman, and it's references the multimodal center. In both the agenda packet and on our flyer today, the summary sheet, it says that, you know, we had submitted a grant proposal in July to the F T A State of Good Repair, and that grant was not accepted or not approved, and we're going to go back and resubmit in fiscal year 12. What was that grant application? Was that for the the next phase of actual building, or, you know, just what was that grant going to cover?
I believe that is for building, but I'm going to ask Mr. Hume, our transit director, to come forward and address that question. Randy?
Thanks, Randy.
Thank you. Yes, it was a grant application under a specific program that that Federal Transit Administration has, and this was for construction and construction phase design activities, and it was for about thirteen point seven million dollars, about ten point eight, ten point nine was federal. And we did have a debriefing today from the F T A in terms of why it wasn't selected, and we will we'll be analyzing that and be resubmitting.
Right, and the reason I ask is, you know, we spent over a million dollars or budgeted to acquire the properties in hopes to build this fourteen million dollar facility, and now if we don't get that thirteen or twelve million dollars from the federal government, that that kind of ends the project in for the short term.
I think we will we will continue to be working with Federal Transit and N C D O T to find construction funding for it. There are maybe some other methods, but right now, there's two main objectives or initiatives that Federal Transit has. One of them is called bus livability.
Okay.
And possibly, if we would have filed under that one, we might have stood a better chance instead of good repair. But we will, we had that discussion today and how we could improve our application.
And Mr. Mayor, I would request that, you know, council gets briefed on that in a work session. I mean, that's like the ninety percent funding for this whole project, and we've already sunk in how many hours of staff time and million-plus dollars trying to acquire the land. So I think that that definitely needs an update during a next work session, if possible.
I think what Mr. Mr. Hume is saying is that this is, as you as you noted, a sizable grant, and it takes it takes some time usually to work through all the the details, and the F T A is working with us to strengthen our application, and that's a positive sign. The fact that they've already invested in the project's also a positive sign. We believe we'll be successful, but it's going to take some time working with F T A and our staff to get the application to its maximum level of competition.
So you think that that's a good subject for a work session to bring council up to staff, up to speed on that?
We'll get an update from staff, sure.
Thanks.
Ms. Applewhite, did you have anything else, Ms. Moon?
That's it.
Ms. Applewhite.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Iman, you know, one of the the most frequent questions I get is about lighting in certain areas of Western Fayetteville. I know we were, we had our our street lighting ordinance on hold for a little bit, and now that's all resolved. Is there a plan to, what is the status of the plan to identify the areas that don't comply with our lighting ordinance in terms of spacing and because there's some still some pretty dark areas? Or is there a plan?
There is not specifically a plan right now. We looked to P W C for our street lighting plan, and of course, there's a funding issue. If you increase lights, there's a cost for installation, and how you're going to recover those costs, and we really, at this point, don't have that plan in place. I would think that that is something that we want P W C to develop and provide for council consideration. And certainly, we had some standards developed.
Right, that's what I was kind of referring to.
The standards are developed, and we're a part of the previous ordinance, but we don't have any any mechanism for implementation at this time.
Well, are you able to tell any of the streetlight providers, whether it be P W C or Progress, that these are the city's standards?
Right.
Where are you meeting those standards, and where are you not meeting those standards, and what's your plan to meet those standards? Is that a reasonable request of all the providers?
As I recall, the ordinance that I'm going just from memory at this time, the process, and Rusty Thompson may may help me with this if if I if I misstate anything, but the process begins with a petition from residents in the affected area that feel that their lighting is substandard. Then that petition goes to our engineering department.
Well, why don't we, if we have standards, then why don't we proactively find out where that they're not being met?
Right, that's what I'm asking. Instead of having the citizens go in, if we have some kind of survey around the city and say, okay, this area is not in compliance with our ordinance, then they're going on the list to be updated.
Well, it's a petition process because ultimately, the customer has to pay under the current system. That's the way the streetlights work. If it, if streetlight services one house, one house pays for the streetlight. If it services five properties, it's split five ways usually. So that that's the reason it's established the way it is. Rust, do you want to add anything to that?
That's pretty much it. The council policy states that the citizen can contact engineering infrastructure, will make an investigation, and will notify the utility company whether it does or does not meet that process, doesn't does or doesn't meet that standard. It's a petition process because if we ask that, it will increase their electric electric bill monthly. So I think if we proactively go out and do that, we're going to be, we may be increasing some bills that some citizens aren't in favor of us increasing.
So when I get the phone calls, Ms. Applewhite, it's pretty dark out here. When are we going to get lights in the annex area, some of them are? Then I say to them, go to your neighbors, and you all get a petition, and then tell the city of Fayetteville that it's dark out here, and is that how we're going to do that?
No, ma'am, they can call me, and we'll do an investigation and determine whether it does or does not meet the street lighting standard that was set forth by the ordinance. If it does not, then we give a letter to the utility company, and then they have sixty days to respond whether they can or cannot meet that lighting standard and how they will implement it.
I just kind of thought that the whole thing meant that we would develop the standard, and then we would survey our community and find out the areas that did not meet our standard, and then make a some sort of plan to fix that versus having the citizens come. Because quite honestly, some people are just used to being in the dark now when they shouldn't be. So I kind of think that we should know the standard and go out and find where we're not in compliance, and then kind of go from there.
I don't disagree with that, but keep in mind, the staff that we have that addresses lighting standards is P W C, and so.
But there are other utilities besides, how about the Progress Energy footprint?
Yeah, P W C for the majority of the city, but also Progress and Lumbee River and the other co-ops.
Is it, is it not reasonable that we could write all of the providers and just say, look, this is an ordinance that we passed a year ago now with certain levels of service that we expect. Where in your footprint do you meet those, and where do you not meet them?
We can certainly do that.
It's kind of like identifying where the unpaved streets are. You got to have a list that you got to start making progress against. We don't pave every street, but at least we know where they're at, and we we have a process to try to address that issue.
Yes, sir, we can make that request.
Thank you, Mayor, that's what I was trying to say.
The other piece that comes into play is when a new development is created, a subdivision, then at that time, the developer is required, as I understand, to install the streetlights, and and it becomes a part of the the infrastructure that's accepted by the city and or P W C or the utility companies.
Right, and I understand that, I'm just talking about the people that are.
Existing.
Yeah, existing. So that that would be amazing if we could do something like that. And then I just had a very quick question, different subject, the one thirty-five point one update to the nonprofit. If you could refresh my memory, I think original conversation had been that perhaps the council were interested in in funding other nonprofits other than our major five or six, or whatever that number was. Was the conclusion that we were developing a process between service-oriented nonprofits and the arts, and then having mechanisms for nonprofits in the community to apply for for funding? I thought that's where we left it off at.
And that was a suggestion that we made early in the budget process. If you'll recall, we had two presentations, one by Mr. Sharp, who outlined the process that they use for rating and selecting how community development block grant funding is distributed to nonprofit applicants, and the second was from the Arts Council, who talked about their processes. And we recommended, rather than creating a new model or a new a new bureaucracy, that we use existing resources in some way to determine how to distribute the limited funds that we have. And the bottom, end of the day, council basically did not reach a decision on changing the process, and so my budget recommended funding at a level that was similar to the previous year, and the council adopted that way because really, there was just no consensus on where to go with that issue.
So the next budget cycle, we're only giving money to the regular ones that we've always given money to? Is that where we still are?
Unless council gives, comes up with a different formula or process.
Thank you.
Mr. Bates?
Mr. Thompson, when you talk about there's a cost associated with having these streetlights put in, what does that cost? Is that your our normal two fifty or three dollars, whatever it is we see monthly?
For Progress Energy, which was the latest one we just added, that varied between dollar, one dollar ninety-four cents a month to five dollars, close to five dollars.
One nineteen.
One nineteen a month to five dollars and forty-six cents a month.
Okay, I just wanted to be clear that it wasn't, you know, they're expected to have to pay, you know, a thousand dollars, you know, to have the streetlights put in. It's what we've always been paying for streetlights that haven't put in.
I think there is a cost to put the streetlights.
I'm not sure that the the situation that we're dealing with here, that the rates that Rusty provided, those were with existing fixtures in place. If you go and install new fixtures, there's a capital cost that has to be added to those costs that Rusty mentioned, which are your monthly electricity costs, as far as I understand.
And I and I don't know what those costs would be. It would vary depending on which location, how many lights, those type things. I'm not sure how that cost would break out.
We'll put this on a work session.
Okay, yeah, because that's, we've had them installed before in neighborhoods that were dark, that was part on north side of the Big Bang, and, I mean, it was two fifty or three dollars at that time, you know, whatever it is monthly. Nobody said anything about being charged, you know, extra for having them put in. I mean, these were completely dark neighborhoods that were done also, and we had some that were upgraded, but we had one, two of them that I know of that was completely dark, that they put the poles and the lights and everything in.
I think it varies on the company's policy, whether it's South River, Progress Energy, Lumbee River, or P W C.
All right, thank you.
Ms. Davie?
I'm Rusty. Sorry, had a quick question, because I know you've been working with the sign ordinance. I just kind of wanted to get an update in regards to.
Actually, Ms. Davie, I think that's Mr. Schufert.
Mr. Schufert, okay, sorry. In regards to reestablishing that meeting with the with the downtown business owners about the sign ordinance, I just kind of wanted to find out what was the update on that.
Yes, ma'am, glad to provide an update on the sign code. Right now, we're engaging our planning commission with regard to where they want to to go with this ordinance. They're providing us with some great feedback, letting us know that that they expect us to do a considerable amount of public outreach, and that will include the downtown.
Rebecca, let me ask a couple of, thank you, Schufert, thank you, sir. The Prince Charles, no, I'm sorry, I had, I had one question here. I think I read recently, which was some good news, that we receive a grant for the Bragg Boulevard Corridor Study?
We didn't receive the grant, but the former Bragg, R T F, did receive a grant from the Department of Economic Adjustment, I think that's right, Office of Economic Adjustment. I believe it's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. They'll administer that, but our staff, Scott again, his staff is working very closely, and Karen Hilton in planning in particular is working closely with the R T F.
Will that be our, will that get our deliverable that we were, we wanted to do?
That's something that's being analyzed right now, isn't it, Scott?
Yes, sir, I met recently with Mr. Belt to receive that good news, and he's informed me that we'll be involved in developing the scope for the project and how it will go out so it will get our deliverables and all like that.
That's that's great news. And then the reclaiming neighborhoods next project, I think for all the work that's going on in those areas in Bonny Doon, and what's the next focus area? Has that been identified?
I actually spoke to Chief Bergamine, he had to leave, and we talked a little bit briefly about what that process looks like, and I asked exactly what criteria were they looking at. They don't have an area yet defined. They do look, their number one, of course, criteria is crime. I know that they they took some several just general guidelines based on some readings and applications that they currently use, and I can list a couple of different other things for you.
We'll get an update from him.
Okay. Yep, but they they understand that that's that that is an item of interest, so.
We probably have nine different neighborhoods.
There's criteria that they do use.
At least nine, probably. Mr. Chris, you have a question, sir?
It's back to nonprofits.
Yes, sir.
But my understanding wasn't quite where Mr. Iman said we ended. I thought we were very clear, very clear to Mr. Sharp, that one of our concerns was that we weren't sure all of the nonprofits were very clear about the process in which they should apply for those funds. And I thought we made it very clear that while we were comfortable with the budget as it is now, but we wanted to make sure that for this next budget cycle, that Mr. Sharp's office did whatever is necessary so that all the nonprofits were very much aware of the process in which they could apply for those. That was my understanding. Am I, am I wrong, Mr. Sharp, or is that?
For the social services that Mr. Sharp would be responsible.
Yes, sir.
Those nonprofits.
Well, I recall that there was a conversation whereby there was interest into perhaps streamlining, streamlining the process with what we do in community development. We are in the process now, this month, of going out for requests for proposals for those community development-related activities such as affordable housing. for those community development-related activities such as affordable housing and the other CDBG or, or home-funded activities. I, uh, don't have any other direction in terms of how we're proceeding with this upcoming budget cycle.
I think we're just saying we want that, we would like for that net to be thrown very broadly wide and...
Okay.
So that...
And we can do that. We, we advertise it, uh, and, and in years past, we've held meetings with the nonprofits where we've sent the information to make sure that they understood what was available. And that would be a good way to go back out this year. And if there's additional opportunities, we can do that at that time, so that all the nonprofits, uh, are, are aware of what, what the city has available and any timelines that, that we have, to make sure everyone understands what's available.
Can y'all think of other things you'd like to do in terms of getting the word out?
Well, if we, if we could, I'm sorry, if, you know, we can notify, I know several nonprofits that are interested in, so if there's like a advertisement, you know, I think we all have Facebooks and all kinds of ways to get in touch with organizations. If we could know, that might help as well.
We can forward that to you. Uh, we, uh, send out, um, we'll put it in the newspaper, we'll add it to our, our website also. And, uh, we, as we get information from nonprofits that are interested, we add them to our mailing list to make sure that they, uh, receive that information.
Okay.
But we'll, we'll make other efforts to, to get the word out.
And then just keep a list of all the ways that we...
Okay.
Our outreach efforts.
All right. Could I answer your question, Mr. Chris?
Yes, it does. And, and I'll tell you my rationale. Because I had some people say to me last year that they were not notified in time, and then when they wanted to apply, they were told that they were too late. Now, that's just one side of the story.
Yes, sir, it is.
But, but...
Because our, our process...
We want to guard against that kind of...
And we'll do all we can. Uh, we, we, again, we will send out the RFP in November, and the, uh, the applications will be due the first week of February.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, did we get everybody? Okay, ma'am, thank you so much for the report tonight.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Okay, we'll move now to item 8.2. Mr. Thompson's here to help us concerning, uh, storm drainage issues.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. Uh, we are here to consider the adoption of resolution authorizing condemnation to acquire an easement for the Summer Hill Storm Drainage Improvement Project. Cover a couple of the issues. The purpose in acqui, in acquiring this easement is to reroute an existing storm drainage system that's right now inadequate. The issue is, is the house is actually encroaching on the actual easement that we have. And in that attachment, in one of your attachments, you'll see a photo of the property, and you'll see where the house is actually on the easement. So, um, we don't want to cause, if we work too close, it's a fairly deep, uh, connection, we'll have to dig there with the pipes, so we don't want to work so close that we damage the house, so we were trying to work around that. So, to do that, we need an additional easement. It's, um, .01 acres, or 596 square feet. The value is about $900. We've tried to contact homeowner 17-plus times. Our latest contact, he's informed us that we have the wrong phone number. So, we are interested in trying to move this project forward, and it's under contract. So, we have two choices. We can move forward with condemnation, or we'll have to do some redesign. It may cost quite a bit more than the $900 to work around this issue. With that, I'm available for any questions or ask that you move to...
Okay, have any questions for Mr. Thompson? Mr. Moan?
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Um, I was looking at the diagram, and it, it goes through the three properties, you know, the house is right there. Then it goes up slightly at an angle, and then comes back down to the right, so it touches a portion of three properties. And how, that, that, that little section, how important is that to the rest of the sewer extension that we've done in the neighborhood there? So, it's all tied together.
The, um, it's hit all his property. It doesn't really touch there, so we're trying to stay off of the, of the three properties. So, um, without that, we'd have to do some, uh, some redesign to that storm drainage. It could be pretty costly without working around that. Uh, if we tried to work real close to it, there's a likelihood we'd damage his house or the foundation, and that would be costly, too.
Right.
So, uh, we've tried meeting with him on site, we've contacted realtors, we've contacted him. We've informed him, we're not upset that he's on the easement, that that's the issue. We're just trying to find a way to work around that.
But, yeah, my, my question is, if we don't get that, and we don't get the, the, the improvements, that could have effects upstream also, you know, on the other drainage. That's what I'm saying, how's it affect?
Yes, sir. Um, the effect would be that we either have to redesign the, the storm drainage, uh, in some other way, or, um, it, it doesn't completely, um, change out the system to where we could have some upstream problems that we still won't be able to address.
Right, okay.
Ms. Applewhite?
Yes, sir. Um, you mentioned that you've made over 17 attempts to communicate with them. Has it been more than just phone calls? We've done certified letters, we've done, what have we done?
We have actually sent him the documentation. He's received it, and he's advised us that he was going to, uh, speak with his attorney about it and get back with us.
Right.
He, uh, we called, we followed up a month later, and he advised us he hasn't gotten with his attorney about it, but he will.
Okay.
And then, the latest phone calls we've gotten, we've, when we've spoken to him, he's advised us it's the wrong number and to quit calling us. Quit calling him.
Okay. All right, all right. But, so we're, we're, okay, we, we're confident that we've done everything we could do.
Uh, I would not bring this forward to you if we haven't tried everything we could try for such a small piece of property.
Right, okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, is there a motion? Mr. Bates?
Motion to approve. You want it all spelled out?
Second.
Detached resolution authorizing condemnation.
Okay.
That's enough.
Thank you, sir. Have a motion in appropriate second. Any discussion on the motion? Ask for your vote, please. That motion carries as in favor, Mr. Bates, Ms. Applewhite, Mr. Hurst, Mr. Shivani, Ms. Davie, Mr. Art, Mr. Massey, Mr. Moan, in opposition, Mr. Chris. Okay, we have an update on our transit bench and shelter. Good news here. Thank you for being here tonight, sir.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor and Council. Good evening, my name is Randy Hume, I'm your transit director. And the purpose tonight, of course, is to, uh, provide you an update of the progress that we've made on installing benches and shelters from about $326,000 that the council allocated to transit, uh, in the summer of last, uh, summer of last year. The, uh, the shelter and bench project is part of our overall, is part of our overall improvement plan. Y'all approved the TDP in December of 2008, and this continues to guide our efforts for improved services. And again, facilities as well as services and buses are, are, uh, parts of that, of that overall plan. The bench and shelter program has been a, has been a team effort. We've worked with engineering infrastructure, construction management, uh, real estate, traffic, legal, and of course transit in, uh, in trying to, uh, get these project, get these benches and shelters on the road. And, uh, there are, there are things that we have done. Uh, one of the things that we have to do is that we've been using a standard for how we place benches and shelters in terms of making sure that they go where we have the, the biggest need. Uh, for benches, uh, we look for stops that have 10 or more boardings a day. Uh, for shelters, we look for stops that have 25 or more, uh, boardings per, per day. There's also site requirements. These are primarily related to safety and ADA compliance. And, uh, they sort of lay out some of those in terms of the pad. No longer with, since about 2005 or '06, we can no longer even go out and put a pole with a sign on it and call it a bus stop anymore. We have to have a firm surface for any bus stop, whether it has a venture shelter or not, and it has to be accessible to, uh, to, to wheelchairs. The, the last three items on this list are the ones that have caused us the, uh, the most difficulty and caused us to, uh, have delays in the project, and these are because they're affecting, uh, other projects and other people. Wheelchair accessibility means that we have to have sidewalks and curb cuts, uh, for us to put the, these in there. Property owner agreements, if, if that pad requires us to go onto somebody's property adjacent to that stop, of course, we have to get either an encroachment or an, or an easement for that. And then, on top of that, if they're along any state road, we have to get the State Department of Transportation, uh, approval for that. This next slide sort of shows what our average costs have been for installing, uh, our benches and shelters, about $1,500 each for each location where we put up a bench, and that includes a trash can, and then about $10,200 for shelters. And the main difference is the cost of, between the bench and the shelter. All the pad work, everything else is, is the same, and really, the, the background, all the, the labor that it takes to be able to place a venture shelter i- is the same. And so that's why you'll see on the list that we provided, there are some locations where we had planned to put benches, now the ridership is up, we can put shelters, so we've advanced those and have installed shelters, because of that, because the effort is still about the same. Thank you.
So that, we had several questions on, that bent, the shelter, is it like a $9,000?
The shelter is about, I think it's about an $8,000 or $9,000, uh, piece, piece of equipment. We've, um, we've also added, added some signs to the, uh, we've also added some signs to the, uh, to, to our shelters and benches, particular shelters. Uh, we've added allotment signs as well as, as some other signs to make sure that, uh, we are good neighbors with the, with the people around us. Progress to date, again, y'all have provided, uh, over $326,000 of carryover funds for, for the project. We've spent over $252,000 so far. That includes 21, uh, shelter locations and 16 bench locations. And, uh, our total improvement system-wide now, we have 51 shelters that are out on the street right now, and again, we, we just started the bench program with this program, so we have those 16 benches. The remaining, uh, the, the remaining locations, and again, we provided a list in your packet of those specific locations where those are placed. The remaining locations can sort of be divided into three areas. We have those that are work in progress. We have, we have a concrete pad that was just installed on Ramsey where we will be, uh, installing a bench. Supposed, I think it's either this week or next, once that concrete cures. Uh, we have another where we have already had pad installed, but we haven't placed it yet because it's part of the service improvement, and, uh, we haven't extended that Route 9 yet. So, we will, we plan to put that up, it's, you know, just before we start that service, so it's not damaged or if somebody's waiting there and no bus comes, no bu, bus comes by. Uh, we have 12 locations that we are, uh, either awaiting, uh, Department of Transportation approval, or we have other related projects. And those two main ones are on Sycamore Dairy Road. There's a sidewalk, sidewalk project, and then Ramsey Street. Of course, we have the, the whole construction there and sidewalks that are being installed there. And we are installing those pads as those sidewalks are, are being done. Uh, we have 17 locations where we are, we, we have, uh, some sort of agreement or we're, we're waiting property owner agreement. Let me go back and say, we, we have 17 where we need those agreements. We have five of those, we have verbal agreements, but we're still waiting to get paperwork back from their attorneys so we can, so we can move on with those. The, uh, the improvements that you've, uh, that you've approved, and again, the bench and sidewalks improvements, all of those are, are making a difference in our, in our system. Fiscal year 2011, uh, we did go over 1.4 million riders, and that's, I think that's a result of the service, the, the new buses, as well as these benches and shelters that, that we have out there. That's 35% increase over fiscal year 2009. October 2011, of course, we just started our, you know, we just started the evening service, the end of September, so this is our first full month. Uh, we had 146,000 people that, that rode our buses. Uh, that's up 25% from the same month last year. And then, I think the other encouragement I wanted to bring to your attention is the new evening service, which started September 26. In October, we carried on those three routes, uh, we carried 1,471 passengers. That's about, uh, somewhere around 65 people a day that are on those three routes at night, when we normally would expect ridership to be a little bit lower. So, the, these improvements are making a difference. Uh, I want to thank you for your support, and with that, I will be glad to answer any questions.
We have a few, Ms. Applewhite, and then Ms. Davie.
Yes, sir, thank you so much for your, um, update. You know, one, one of the things that's been a little frustrating for me is sometimes driving around the city and seeing so much trash around the bus stops. And I saw the slide that said the benches and the shelters each have a, a trash receptacle there. Now, for the stops that just have the poles, you know, in some cities, I've seen like the trash thing that's like attached to the pole to keep perhaps citizens from just like throwing trash all over the, the place. Is that something that we could consider, at least looking, I know it's another cost, and, and we would hope that our citizens would just be a little more careful about that, but is that something you see feasible, or?
Certainly something we can look into, uh, again, in making sure, of course, we always want to make sure the trash stays in there and doesn't blow out, but with, with that, I, I think, uh, it's something we certainly will be glad to look into.
I mean, it's not even a matter of blowing out, it's just like on the ground.
I understand that. And, and again, that's something with our, uh, as we go on looking at our budget this year. As we have more locations out there, uh, it is straining our staff to be able, because we, we use our regular maintenance staff to go out and try to, uh, police all those locations, and, uh, it's getting more and more difficult with the more locations we have to try to, try to cover. So, uh, it's something that, that, it does have a budget impact, and we'll be working on that, uh, as we prepare this, this budget year.
You know, and, and I think that sometimes, perhaps if we could find a way to communicate that to our, our ridership, that, you know, it, it does cost us money, and perhaps, you know, it's a partnership that we could try to keep. I'm sure Councilmember Hurst, with his buffet bill beautiful, would appreciate, you know, the trash that's not blown in the street. Maybe just a ca, a campaign or something to communicate that to our riders might help.
And we have also, um, excuse me.
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, we, we've also, the last, really the last month in our safety meeting, have been emphasizing with our bus operators, particularly at some of the problem locations, to make sure they communicate back to our dispatchers when they see trash at a, at a stop. Because we can't go out and take care of those if we are, if they let us know, so.
Right, thank you, sir.
Ms. Davie?
Thank you for the update. I had a couple of questions. Is there a diagram, a public diagram that shows, um, like a map that shows where all our benches and shelters are?
We, uh, I'm gonna have to check on that. We, you know, we, we certainly have a diagram that shows where all our stops are. And, uh, I think we are, as we're working on a project right now with our automatic vehicle locator, I think we're trying to make sure those are also identified with benches and shelters, but I'm not sure we have that right now.
Okay, that would, that would be a helpful, um, tool there. In regards to the cost, I know we've talked about that before, the cost, um, of the benches and the shelters. Is, is there any other avenue that we can look at to possibly, um, reduce the cost of how much it's costing for the, for the shelters, I should say?
I'm sure we can. Of course, we're, we're also, in addition to this money, you know, we've been allocating a portion of our grant, our grant every year for benches and shelters. And I think it was $50,000 in this year. So, the, that's some other ways. We're trying to make sure we proceed and keep, keep putting those out.
Oh, yeah, because if, if it could come down a little bit in the cost, and of course, we could have more benches and shelters. And my last question, you know, I always ask you about the, the partnerships and, and how that's going with the committee. I know that's a little bit different than the presentation that you brought, but, um, I'm just hoping that along with, um, the success that you're having with Kate Fair Valley and also with the Cross Creek Mall, that we're still out there advocating some partnership with other, um, employers or organizations so we can, um, continue to extend those routes and those services. Thank you.
Mr. Art?
Well, Ms. Davie kind of touched on my question. I, uh, I'm concerned about the, the idea of paying $10,000 per bus stop for a shelter. That seems to be a, a little bit high. So, I, I would be very much in favor of seeing if there's other economic avenues available to, to take that money, even though it's not just the city's money, it's grant money, to extend it as far as we can, uh, to, to meet the requirement of our ridership, but certainly be, to be physically conservative in how we spend that money.
There, there certainly are other styles of shelters. Again, we've, uh, and again, I wasn't here when that was selected, but there was this type of shelter that was selected. You know, it has some features that probably add to the cost that maybe you're not in a more standard, uh, you know, out-of-the-package type of shelter. But, uh, we might, we might look, look at those. But, you know, to have a uniform look on the streets so that people know where it is, this is what we've concentrated on.
Mr. Chris?
We had a breakdown last year that showed us why it costs that much. You know, we've got ADA ridership. When we put a shelter, we've got to have concrete, accessibility, trash can, it's, it's an expensive proposition. But anyway, two questions, Mr. Hume. Advertisement, where are we?
We, uh...
Are you in on the committee?
We, we are, we are working with the committee. We, we are, we are working with the committee. Right now, we, we do have a draft policy that we've been working on with legal. We've presented it to advisory committee. Then we are working on a, the request for proposal that we're hoping to get out sometime in early December. And with that, we will better know what type of revenue we can expect and what type of agreement that we can put together. Again, we want to have that, make sure the advertiser knows sort of what those, those content policies are so we don't, we don't get off on one foot and, and then find out where someplace else.
No advertising in a net cafes, right? Don't answer that. Next question, sir. How, how have, have you looked at how we're going to tell riders along the varying routes where some of the stops are that there probably will never be a shelter there? And you know why? In many cases, too close to the roadway, encroachment onto yards, which requires easement, all of those kinds of things. I don't know if you've given some thought to that, but I'll tell you this. If you've ever ridden the subways in Washington DC, they have a map on the wall that shows where every stop is for that line.
Yes, sir.
And we could do something similar to that and where a stop is, where we're never going to be able to put a shelter. We could code that as such. Just an idea. Because I've got people saying, well, when are we going to get shelters? Well, some of them are never going to get shelters. And you understand why. Along the NCO DT corridors and what have you, you know, Murchison Road is a classic example, where some of those stops are about two feet from the roadway.
And they have a wall right behind them.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Sir, it might be a good idea if you could list those, those prioritized future coming sites on the web. You know, we do that with resurfacing, I think. So if citizens get called, maybe they can see where they are in the queue, if they're on there at all. And I continue to get questions about the transfer station, the current one on Person Street. And I wonder if you could maybe speak to, is that operating okay? Or are you hearing, what are you hearing on that, sir?
It's, it's operating okay. I mean, it's better than what we had, I think, before we, we have what we have now. It certainly is not, not something that, I'm gonna say we're, we're necessarily proud of in terms of the way it looks, you know, with, with the fence around it and, you know, temporary buildings. We just, just this week, we did some things to improve our lighting at night. And we had noticed with the daylight savings time that, that some of the lighting, and some of it had to do with PWC and also our neighbors. They, their lights are going off and on too. So we've been working on the lighting. Overall, it's working, you know, I think it is, it's working well. We, you know, we certainly have, we'd like to give our passengers, our customers, a better service and better facility.
Well, outside of the facility, if someone had a complaint about the way they were treated there, what do they do with that, sir?
The best thing we would, we, again, some can talk, call the city, some would call us at our, at the main line or, or my line. And we'll, we'll take those and investigate those. Yes, we, we have had some complaints, really some customer service complaints about buying tickets and other things. One of the things we're working on is to trying to get some remote locations for, for selling tickets, just so it's more convenient for people to buy those passes as opposed to having to come down to the central station.
Is there always a supervisor on site there, sir?
There's always a dispatcher whenever it's open on site. And that is sort of a supervisor. Yes.
It is a supervisor?
It is a supervisor. And again, they're, they're doing multiple things. They're, they're on the radio with bus drivers. They're waiting on the window. They're, they're also answering information calls about routes. And so they're doing multiple, multiple tasks.
Okay. Thanks for your report tonight, sir. I think that's it. Okay. Okay, we'll move to eight point four, a report from the Appointment Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor and members of council, the Appointment Committee, which consists of Mayor Shivani, council members Applewhite, Crisp, and myself, met late this afternoon at 5:30 to make recommendations for your approval, City Council. I appreciate council members Massey attending this evening as well. We had three vacancies, one for the Airport Commission, one for the Senior Citizens Advisory Board, and one for the Stormwater Advisory Board. And I move that we, that we move forward for your approval the following favel city citizens for filling these vacancies. For the Airport Commission, it would be Charm Kutch. For the Senior Citizens Advisory Board, it would be Patricia Fairley. And for the Stormwater Advisory Board, it would be Conrad Hoing III.
I second that motion.
Have a motion and an appropriate second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, let me ask for your vote, please. That's unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Hurst. We'll move now to nine point one, proposed 2012 City Council Meeting Dates Calendar. Hopefully you ever had the opportunity to review this and suggest any changes. Mr. Bates?
Yes, sir. November 21st, a Wednesday, the agenda briefing, 4:00 PM, the Wednesday before Thanksgiving. I doubt that one will be attended by many as this Wednesday coming up will, won't be. I, I'd just see if that one's going to get moved.
Okay. We'll look at that one. And then I think we probably want to add those, the retreat dates on there, since those are official council meetings as well. Those are February retreat dates, third and fourth. Any other changes, Council? This will be coming back to us to be formally adopted. So if you do see anything else that you'd like for staff to consider, we'll still have some time, but please share that with them.
Mr. Mayor, when this comes, when we get our final, will we get it color coded again?
I think it probably will be. Mr. Hyman, the final one will be color coded and everything like it normally is?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you. Anything else tonight?
Yes, sir.
Move to adjourn?
No, move.